I seconded.
Seconded by Trustee O'Brien. I'll in favor?
Favor.
There's no opposition, then the motion passes. Are there any declarations of conflicts this evening? Seeing none, I will move on to information items. 4.1 Extended School Closures and Ongoing Distance Learning. Secretary Daly, please provide your report to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just going to try and share my screen here.
Just bear with us, everyone. Secretary Daly, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The purpose of this report is to bring trustees up to date on our system plan for continuity of learning. Trustees would recall that our current school closure began with a ministerial order on March 12th. Last week, April 26th, the Minister of Education further extended the school closure period until at least May 31st. In that initial phase of our school closure, when we started to consider what our plans were going to be, we did have to keep in mind that we were kind of in an unprecedented health crisis. That certainly in Canada, we don't have much in our history in terms of responding to this type of crisis. And from a school level or a school board level, a rapid transition to a more online or virtual format, as well as a real change in the work that we do here on the business side of the building as we move to a more of a work from home sort of format, which we don't have a whole lot of experience with in the education sector. Certainly throughout all of our planning, and we've tried to be consistent in this messaging, our continuity of learning plan first and foremost is to consider the health and wellbeing of our students and staff, to try to provide continuity of learning for our students that is both flexible and accessible to all of our students, and also trying to provide supports to staff so that they can do the best job that they can do. Trustees will recall that that first phase of the school closure took place in the period immediately after March break. The ministry released a relatively limited list of learn at home resources that students could engage in. Our curriculum department also provided learn at home resources during that period that our parents and families could access. During that period and anticipating the possibility of a further closure, our priorities shifted somewhat to assessing readiness for distance learning for our educators, for our students, trying to develop different platforms that we could provide our teaching with, trying to assess the technological needs of both staff and students, and putting PD plans into place for our teachers who needed them. So in that first stage, we were hoping, first of all, to establish contact between schools and students and parents, to assess student needs regarding technology, devices, equipment, and Wi-Fi access. And then in order for teachers to get back into schools, to get resources, and to facilitate the distribution of equipment and technology, developing access to schools protocols in concert with Halton Public Health and with our public board partners to make sure that everybody could get in and out of the buildings safely. The actual kind of distance learning period began, sorry, on April 6th with the extension of the school closure up until May 4th. At that point, the ministry provided some specific guidelines to boards around hours and focus of instruction. We've tried to be consistent from the start to what distance learning means for our board. We've done this in consultation with other boards. We've done this through some research around distance learning and best practices. We've tried to establish a system where students can access learning at any point in the day, ideally that it does not require constant online access, and that it requires minimal parent or guardian support. That third one is probably one that we've struggled with and we continue to work on, particularly at the elementary level. During this period, our academic goals have been to make sure that students successfully complete the school year, that they advance to the next school year, at the secondary level that they earn credits, and certainly that they graduate on time. In terms of the guidelines we've received from the ministry, these will be familiar to both our parents and to our trustees. The ministry did give guidelines around what the focus should be, both in terms of instruction and hours of instruction or hours of work for students. This is kind of the bare bones. We've added to this in addition to literacy and math, obviously our religious studies, science and social studies, and FISED and the arts. Because students, I think the feeling by the ministry was because our elementary students had been in their program for six months, that from the period of April till the end of the year, the focus would be on formative assessment as opposed to summative assessment, that teachers would continue to assign work, to provide feedback, to gather evidence for how students are progressing, to provide feedback around that progress. It's a bit of a different process at the secondary level because for our students in the second semester, they'd only been in their classes for about a month and a half. So again, the direction was that secondary students would continue to be assigned learning tasks, projects, culminating activities that would be marked, both for the purposes of formative, for feedback, and summative evaluation, and that teachers will communicate results of marked assignments back to students. In terms of how the school year will end, all students from K to 12 will receive a final report card. In terms of how final marks would be determined, although the ministry gave us direction early on, boards struggled a little bit with some of the language that was provided. We have got more specific guidance from the ministry. And I think it's important to note certainly in both elementary and secondary, but maybe more so in secondary, for our students essentially their March 13th or midterm mark is the floor for their mark. So if they continue to do work throughout the semester, their marks can improve, but their marks will not go down over the course of the semester. In a similar way for our elementary students, final grades will be based on learning up until March 13th. Any work that teachers assess after that point can be used to increase a student's final grade if the student does demonstrate improvement over that period. So our students will receive report cards with comments at the end of June. In terms of some of the supports that we've put in place around distance learning, one of the things we talked about early on was trying to ensure that all of our families had access to appropriate devices and technology. We've talked about this in the past. We had families pick up about 1,300 devices, give or take, both laptops, some other devices that students need to support their learning. We've tried to provide internet or Wi-Fi service to students and families where necessary. We're probably up closer to getting to the 200 mark as opposed to 100 at this point. And that's just as kind of a small snapshot of what's gone on in the province. We heard this morning that over 200,000 devices have been distributed throughout the province, and I think it was 25,000 or 35,000 Wi-Fi access points province-wide. I referenced in our previous session the Distance Learning Guide for Parents and Guardians. That's on our board website. It went out to all parents as well. And it does provide a summary of our plan going forward, particularly around assessment and evaluation. One of the things that we heard back from parents early on was that some of them were struggling with accessing the learning platforms that we're using. So our teachers, for the most part, are using one of these three digital learning platforms, either D2L, which is really our board-supported and ministry-supported platform, Google Classroom, or Google's also popular in our board, and also some teachers are using Office 365 applications and particular teams. We did hear back, we did ask for feedback from parents around some of the struggles they may have been having connecting to these platforms, and that has enabled us to come up with some kind of tip sheets for parents. Those struggles have tended to be resolved as both parents and students have become, and teachers for that matter, have become more familiar with the platforms. We've certainly heard from parents that one of the things that they have struggled with is having multiple platforms in one household. So even in a particular school, a student in grade five might be using Google Class, and a student in grade eight is using D2L. So that's a takeaway for us, but we have heard from parents, or at least heard in the first couple of weeks, that that was a bit of a struggle. In terms of some other supports in that initial phase where it wasn't really teacher-led learning, curriculum services did supply kind of a daily routine that parents and families could follow. They could still use that as well. So that's been made available. In terms of special education, I certainly couldn't scale down the work of our Spec Ed department on one slide. And it'll come up in a couple of other slides. Camillo and his team did a great job at CAC the other night, on Monday night, explaining kind of what Spec Ed's been doing and where they're going next. His slide deck is posted on our board website. But really during this period, it was kind of described this way, a conversation I had online with one of our staff, that certainly our Spec Ed personnel over the last couple of weeks have really been forced to redo every single process that they have because we're now in a virtual environment. So that is social workers, CYCs, EAs, our psychologists, speech and language, CDAs, everybody involved there. So the work that all of our Spec Ed, our teachers and our staff has done has been really excellent. And I'll get to Camillo to maybe give an update on that in a minute. In terms of some of our other support staff groups, our ESL teachers, both at elementary and secondary, have been meeting weekly to try and support our newcomer students. Our workers at the Welcome Center have been providing ongoing assessment, and our settlement workers can continue to complete assessments and family settlement plans, and have also reached out to some of those families for some other supports as well. In terms of what we've tried to provide for staff, both in supports and PD, this has really been the work of our Curriculum Services Department under Anna's direction. And in the written report, a list of a number of the resources that we have provided for our teachers and ECEs and our administrators as well, including sample lesson plans, sample day plans, how to connect our kindergarten teams in a better way for distance learning, guidance on assessment and evaluation. Today, we just released, or in the process of releasing, a guide for administrators as well to help support teachers in their continued learning and help them to get better at providing online learning, and also to, quite honestly, to monitor some of the work that they're doing. We have been offering lots of one-on-one support and team support as well. And I'm really happy to see that many of our teachers have gathered together in teams on their own to support each other from school to school and grade level to grade level. Camillo talked in, on Monday night, his team talked Monday night, about some of the supports that our other support staff have been provided with in terms of PD, both online and in terms of support from our privacy officer as we move to a more virtual environment and make sure that the connections that we're making with students and staff are safe and secure. In terms of our support for administrators, in the first phase, we were meeting with principals twice a week. We've scaled that back to once a week. Our senior team meets with the deputy minister on Thursdays. We meet twice a week as well and continue to meet as needed. Our superintendents, depending on what their portfolio responsibilities are, have also been meeting provincially with their counterparts to be able to share best practices and to get a sense of what other boards have been involved in. And I do the same with directors, both from the public board and our Catholic board directors. I meet once a week with the director of Halton Public as well. Our senior staff has also consulted with the senior staff in Halton Public around some of their plans. We're talking a little bit now about summer school and what some of those plans might be going forward. We've been fortunate as well, in kind of the general realm of faith and wellness supports, to have lots of supports provided, both through our curriculum services, through our chaplains, through our system chaplaincy leader at the school level. If you've been following any of your schools on social media, you'll also see that morning prayer and liturgies have been a constant across our schools. In terms of other mental health supports, I did talk a little bit about social workers and CYCs and the work they've been doing. We've also been fortunate that School Mental Health Ontario has provided us with all kinds of great resources that we've made available to parents. In some ways, we've almost been inundated with resources, not just around mental health, but in general. So we've been fortunate that both our curriculum staff and our library services staff have really done a great job of vetting those sorts of sources. And sometimes free is good, sometimes free is free for a reason. So we're trying to be strategic in what sort of resources we make available, both to our teachers and our families, to make sure that they fit our overall board philosophy. We've had to shift the way that our Compassionate Care and Crisis Response Team responds as well in a more virtual environment. Unfortunately, we have had to call on them in a couple of instances since we've kind of entered into our school closure. And finally, I think I shared with trustees last week or the week before, our social workers have also developed kind of a series of in-house videos to assist parents, students, and staff. We've shared them with the ministry and we've shared them with Oxta as well. I think Oxta's highlighted them on their website. In terms of community resources, we have been working with Halton Food for Life to both package and deliver food packages to our families in need. We're working also with Halton Food for Thought, and our principals are identifying families in need at their schools. And we're going to be distributing some gift cards that parents can use. We've kind of been in constant communication, both with the region and the province, around other possible community resources that we can play a part in. And so far, we haven't been called upon at this point to provide space for some of the emergency daycares that have been set up, but we are in a bit of a back and forth with both the region and the province along those lines as well. In terms of strategic communications, trustees would be well aware of the communications that have gone out to schools and parents. The written report that I have kind of summarizes some of the tactics that communications have used. I think in terms of kind of putting everything together, the Learn at Home website that we're connected to on our board website has been a really great kind of one-stop shop for lots of different resources. And again, we're trying to reach out to our students' families on a variety of social media platforms. Maybe I'll stop there for now before we kind of get to our next steps because I think there probably are a number of questions.
So I will now thank you, Secretary Daly. Excellent report, actually. I'm opening that to any questions. So first on cue is Trustee O'Brien. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you Director Daly for the excellent work you're doing in these very unprecedented times. Question about next year. We are not in the ideal situation, we know that. But of course, when you start a new course, you need to have certain skills before you can start. Do you feel that we are giving these students the skills they need to start next year? I'm thinking about a grade 11 math class where they got to go to grade 12, where you need to know certain things even to start.
Secretary Danik?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for that question, Trustee O'Brien. So really, next steps, there's a number of things that we're working on right now. And one of them is our return to school. And we're not sure if that return is going to be on May 31st or if it's going to be on September 8th or sometime after that. So certainly, one of our concerns will be, regardless of when our students return, is trying to close those gaps that may have come about over the last period. Really, the kind of plan around continuity of learning is to try and lessen those gaps, to try and keep students on track. But certainly, if we're not able to come back to school until But certainly, if we're not able to come back to school until September, part of our planning will be, we'll need to do fairly early assessments of our students and where they're at, and we may need to reach back before we reach forward. The minister, in his press conference at the end of last week, talked about a summer learning program that the province will be encouraging. We don't have a lot of details on that yet. We'll certainly be, we're gearing up right now for kind of our traditional summer school program. One of the things that the minister did allude to was an ability for students over the summer to take upgrade courses. We used to offer upgrade courses at the secondary level as kind of a matter of course, we did it for many, many years. The ministry stopped that practice a number of years ago, but it sounds like in this particular circumstance, it may be brought back so that students could attend either face-to-face or probably more likely online sessions over the summer in order to get caught up, if that's necessary. We've also traditionally, over the summer, offered literacy and numeracy support to our elementary students. So those plans are in place, a little bit contingent on what direction the ministry gives us, and then obviously, what our ability is either to get into schools, if we can do that, and offer something face-to-face, or plan to offer online.
Thank you. It's a follow-up question, Director Daly. I'm thinking more of the students that fall through the cracks, maybe they don't have all the skills. Can we guarantee that if we do pass them, that they will have the skills to start the next course?
I think what we can guarantee is that whatever the course is next, or the grade level is next, we'll try to, as we always do, meet students where they're at, assess where they're at, and then adjust our instruction if necessary.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. So through you, Mr. Chair, just to comment about the SpecEd piece, I just wanted to comment, to reiterate what Director Daly had said with respect to how much work has been done by Superintendent Cipriano and the SpecEd Department. You know, these are our most vulnerable students, and I was really worried how we were going to ensure that their needs were being met. And they have done a fantastic job, and I also want to give a shout out to the EAs and just how instrumental they have been in connecting with the students and assisting them on a daily basis to make sure that they have the hands-on support that they require. I think that has been extremely beneficial and has been a key so far, probably to a great success for a number of these students. It'd be great to see if there's a possible way for us to have teachers start to connect in the same way.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So it's a two-part question, because Director Daly touched on summer school in his presentation, and then there was a little bit of a discussion about it, and they went through trustee O'Brien in that conversation. So my understanding is currently that summer school, a lot of it is already done remotely. Can I get the stats on that before I ask my next part of the question? I think it's Superintendent McGillicuddy who actually deals with that piece.
So when you ask about the statistics, trustee Guzzo, what statistics are you specifically referring to?
Sorry, how many students are currently, prior to this, would be doing summer school remotely?
Okay, thank you.
As opposed to at the school.
Okay. Superintendent McGillicuddy, you have the floor.
Through you, Mr. Chair, and to trustee Guzzo. I don't have the exact statistics, but I can tell you that over the past couple of years, the e-learning component of summer school has outgrown the face-to-face portion. So a larger number of students now habitually, from summer to summer, take their credit in summer school by e-learning rather than in the face-to-face usual classroom manner.
Thank you, Superintendent McGillicuddy. And I didn't need the exact numbers, I just needed to kind of get a sense of, you know, does it outweigh, and I had understood that it outweighed the actual physical classroom piece. In regards to that, is there, how is that done? Is there face-to-face contact with the teacher at all in that, or is it, like, how does that look?
It's a completely e-learning platform done through D2L, just like our regular day-school e-learning courses are that students can take through Merton. So it is not like the distance learning experience that students are having right now, having had their regular classroom interrupted. It is an intentionally designed e-learning course that doesn't involve any face-to-face teacher-student contact.
Okay, thank you. So there's none of that, so, okay. And then just my other pieces, just to comment on, further on trustee Agnew. I was present for the CAC meeting on Monday night and the presentation, and the work that the SpecEd Department has done, and particularly, the work that the EAs are doing with our identified students is amazing, and I just think it's important for us to commend that department on the work that they've done.
Any further questions? So we'll move on to student trustee Swan. You have the floor.
Yes, thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Director Daly. First of all, thank you very much for that very detailed report. So this is a concern that's been addressed by many students, and personally, I've gone through this as well, where teachers have actually provided assignments during that, I guess, for lack of better terms, layoff period between March 13th and April 6th. And these assignments were due during this period. So my question really is, is would they still count negatively to your mark if you didn't do as well on that? And I would like some clarification on that.
Trustee, Secretary Daly.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Maybe I'll ask Superintendent McGillicuddy to talk a little bit about the instructions that we've given to secondary teachers, to all our teachers, but secondary teachers in particular, around that question.
So as I understand, and through you, Mr. Chair, as I understand the question, it pertains to any activity that's taking place after the initial part of distance learning, which was conducted solely by the Ministry of Education through TVO and so forth. And the direction that's been given to teachers where summative evaluation is concerned, that is a student's final mark, is that any activity that takes place after March 13th can only support an increase in the student's mark, and it cannot result in a decrease in the student's mark.
Okay. And so I have a follow-up question to that, because I think there's some technicality that I'm seeing here. For instance, if there was an assignment, for instance, that was assigned before March 13th, but was graded, and the mark was given back to the student after, you know, during this distance learning period, would that be still counted?
Again, if it were favorable to the student, the teacher would be using that to upgrade or increase the student's mark. If it would not be favorable, it cannot reduce the mark that the student would have achieved by the March 13th.
All right. So even though the assignment was given on, or before March 13th, because it was, the mark was given back after the fact, it should only be counted favorably? That's what I'm understanding from that?
Any assessment that is completed after the March 13th date can only affect the student's mark in a way that is favorable to the student.
Okay. And so just my last question, so from this point onwards, the March...
Student trustee, I says that's your supplement to the supplement to the supplement.
Sorry about that.
No, it's fine. Thank you.
Yeah, it's just really quick. So March 13th is the, like, the floor mark, right?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Superintendent McGillicuddy, excellent report. So we'll move on to student trustee Kara Tau. You have the floor. Student trustee Kara Tau.
Hello, sorry, my internet is fairly poor. Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is for Director Daly. Students' concerns during this time have been numerous, but one question that I do get often is regarding clarification in what exactly the board's plan is for final exams and all the technical details therein. So I'd appreciate any information the board has at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. Trustee Kara Tau, one of the parts of the announcement that the ministry made last week is that all PA days and exam days that remain in the calendar are now instructional days. So at the secondary level, final exams will be replaced by a course culminating activity.
Thank you, Secretary Daly. Moving on to trustee O'Hern Zernota, you have the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, and it was kind of trustee Kara Tau stole my thunder. I was going to talk to Superintendent McGillicuddy about the floor. The Ontario universities, as the midterm marks have gone in for grade 12 students, is there any leeway there? Is that process, do you know if that process will continue as it has in past years? Or is it different this year?
Who was that question to, trustee O'Hern Zernota?
I guess to Director Daly, and then he can delegate as he sees fit.
Thank you. Thank you for your question. Secretary Daly, you have the floor.
I don't think the process has changed, other than the timing changed a little bit. I do know that both the colleges and the universities did commit to waiting until all of the midterm marks were in before they started to consider offers of acceptance.
Thank you. Do you have a follow-up, trustee O'Hern Zernota?
No, I'm good. Thank you for asking, though.
Thank you. Trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I'd like to make a comment, then I have a question. As a parent, I'm quite impressed with the ability for the organization to transition, to steer a ship this big and transition over such a short period of time has been quite impressive, and I'm quite happy with the level of education that my children are getting remotely. So I would like to commend you, Director Daly, and all of the staff. To get 4,500 employees all moving in the same direction is quite a feat, and to do it in such a short period of time is quite impressive. So thank you all. The question I have, I saw a news conference with the minister, and he'd mentioned that the provincial government was going to distribute quite a few devices, iPads, I think he said specifically. Out of the 1300 devices have distribution, and if so, how many?
Trustee Murphy, can I interrupt? Can you please start over? He didn't come through clearly. It's not your...
Where would you like me to start? You know me, I don't like hogging the mic.
All right. So just give us your question, we got the comment. Thank you.
Okay. So my question is, the minister Leche had commented in a news conference that the province would be distributing devices, iPads, I think he said specifically. And I was wondering, of the 1,300 devices that we have distributed, have any of those come from the provincial government?
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Pass this question over to secretary Daly. I think you already addressed this already. Thanks.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. Trustee Murphy, we weren't in a situation in our board where we needed to go out and purchase any additional technology. We've been able to supply our student needs through our existing technology. The Apple-Rogers combination that the ministry talked about was really a package that I think the ministry had negotiated with Rogers and Apple and made it available to boards. Boards have also been given a little bit of leeway in terms of allocating some of their funds to purchasing technology if needed, where they may not have been in the past.
Thank you. Do you have a follow-up, trustee Murphy?
No, I don't. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Next is trustee Agnew. You have the floor, trustee. Trustee Agnew?
Yep, I'm coming. Sorry, technical issues. So I just wanted to ask a question with respect to the consistency of instruction from teacher to teacher and student to student. I know that there, I've received some correspondence from families where there's been a concern about the way that instruction is being given. Some are receiving it live, some are getting pre-recorded videos, some are just strictly through email or other means. So I'm just wondering if you could address the inconsistency with respect to the manner in which instruction's being given, recognizing that obviously, we are all trying to do our best, and what the staff and the board has been able to do in this period of time has been commendable, but just looking for some information on the consistency in delivering that instruction.
Secretary Danik.
I'll start, and maybe I'll call on some of my colleagues to jump in as well. Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. Trustee Agnew, I guess I would respond in the following way, that the delivery, or the mechanism of delivery from teacher to teacher in this format is probably not too different than it would be in a regular face-to-face format. Teacher approaches to pedagogy, while we do try and stress consistency, do vary from classroom to classroom. Our hope here would be that certainly, teachers are doing their best to provide a continuity of learning. We know that certainly, with all our students, but probably either with our younger students or students who may struggle in some way, that that more personal connection, however that's translated, is advantageous. We are encouraging our principals to encourage our teachers to reach out in a way that can engage students, that can create a sense of community, whether that's in a face-to-face format or through, I know classes and schools have done Jersey Days and Beach Days, and schools have put videos together with their teachers to kind of reach out. I understand that's not the same thing, but one of the things that we are working with our principals on is supporting them to support teachers in a sense of monitoring, both around things like engaging activities, trying to encourage collaboration online, giving timely descriptive feedback, communicating on a consistent basis with parents and students, and also supporting them with ongoing professional learning. So that's what we're committed to, to continue doing during this period, and we know that that application has been somewhat uneven, but we are trying to raise everyone's level to best serve the needs of our students and families.
Thank you. Trustee Agnew, do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I just have a follow-up. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Secretary Daly. You know, again, I know that it's difficult understanding, again, that different teachers have different styles and different methods of instruction, as you said. Even in the regular classroom, we see things differ from situation to situation. I'm just curious, and you've got next steps up here, so maybe I'm jumping ahead, but, you know, is there a plan to take a look at increasing possibly those live interactions with students from an instructional perspective, or even just, you know, having pre-recorded videos for students so that they have more, I don't know, more of a personal connection in the instruction? I'm just wondering if that's part of the next steps?
Secretary Daly.
Yes, and through you, Mr. Chair. So some of those things that I just talked about in terms of supporting our teachers are our next steps. I think I could confidently say that the amount of at least pre-recorded lessons that are now taking place exceed what we started with. So I think more, or I do know more of that is going on. Can more of it happen? Yes. Maybe I'll ask superintendent Percasim to talk a little bit more specifically about the kind of the ongoing work that we're asking our... that we're asking our principals and teachers to do through the Supporting Administration to Support Teachers document that we've released today.
Superintendent Percasim, you have the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for the opportunity to address the issue, and I certainly don't want to be overly verbose. Director Daly has provided an excellent report that has updated everyone with regard to our efforts in supporting our teachers and administrators to ensure that in some way we reach the student desk. And I'm not going to be focusing on the curriculum delivery because I don't believe that Trustee Agnew is so much focused on the actual curriculum delivery as we are in making connections with our students. And so it is an expectation that all of our teachers make connections with their students, as it is the ministry's expectation. The means of that communication has not been defined, and we have not mandated real lifetime communication. We feel that there are other ways and other means in which our teachers can communicate. We have to honor the fact that our teachers have the right to exercise their professional judgment in this regard, and that program delivery, as well as communication with students, is going to be differentiated. We do have board policies and procedures that caution all stakeholders with regard to social media and setting prudent boundaries for students and for staff. And it is something that we encourage, along with O C T, to support our staff to ensure that they are making good choices in that regard. So there are some means of communication that have been suggested by parents that we do not feel from various perspectives, whether it's freedom of information or other very pertinent reasons that it's not prudent for our staff to use, even though it may be user-friendly for parents and actually may have been used by our teachers in the past. So with regard to pre-recorded videos, this is something that we've been supporting our teachers in well over a thousand of our teachers in numerous sessions and ongoing sessions that we've held with D two L. Our D two L platform has gone from 600 logins in December to 60,000 in the month of April. I really do believe, and I appreciate Trustee Agnew's comment, that I do believe that staff are putting forth their very best efforts, and that they are trying to do their best to connect with everyone. Do we have room for improvement? Absolutely, we always do. We do have standards of practice for teaching and learning that are monitored and supervised by our administrators. And I strongly encourage parents who are reaching out to trustees that have concerns around how things are working at their school, how their teacher is communicating with students, to direct those individuals back to the school, to the teacher, and to the principal and the family of school superintendent, and give them the opportunity to address their concerns directly. We've followed through with that on many occasions, and it's been quite successful, whether it's too much work, not enough work. I just wanted to be clear on that point. And curriculum continues to be committed to providing ongoing support to teachers in any way and administrators that they see fit. Our goal is to make sure that this experience of distance learning at the student desk is successful, that our students are learning, and that it is a special time for family in our faith. This is something that I feel that, I know that it's frustrating, and you're spending a lot of time together as a family. But really, in many ways, in curriculum, we have thought that this is a wonderful celebration of family life with all of the aspects of spending time together that are not always joyful, but that have many opportunities to connect as a family. And that learning goes well beyond whatever platform the teacher uses. Every interaction that children have with their parents is meaningful and is good learning. And we want to take this time to celebrate this new way of learning and understanding that family time is precious, and it is something that is to be celebrated during this time. And anything we can do as a staff to support that and support our students and our parents is something that we really want to do. So please do reach out, encourage parents to connect with us. We're here to help. And I don't know whether I've directly answered the question or helped to support it in any way, but we are open to next steps, open to improvements always. And I value and thank you for your input today.
Thanks for sharing that information with us, Superintendent Percasim.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Percasim, and thank you, Director Daly.
Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you, through Mr. Chair, through you to Director Daly. Director Daly, in the normal school environment, the principal is the instructional leader. They can visit classes. I mean, when I, my last year as a teaching, we had our principal come in at least once a week. They had a well sense of how instruction was going in the school. How are you and the other administrators making sure that happens on distance education? What kind of monitoring, what kind of presence does the administration have over the distance learning?
To you, Secretary Daly.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. So we've asked our administrators to have teachers invite them into their learning platforms. So if they're using a D two L classroom, they would be invited in to be part of that class. I did make reference to the work we're doing with our principals right now, being able to support our teachers. So it's one thing, obviously, to come in and say, hey, I don't see much personal connection going on, just leaving it at that. The resource that Superintendent Percasim and her team has put together has identified areas that we want to focus on, and then right beside them identified possible resources, suggestions, and tips for principals. So principals do have access to those online learning environments.
Okay.
Trustee O'Brien, do you have a follow up?
I do. Again, in the normal school environment, a principal would walk in anytime near a class. It just was part of life at any part of the day. Do they have that kind of access now? I mean, without, can they just walk in?
If they've been added to a classroom, they can walk in virtually at will. We do, obviously, don't want principals walking in virtually to classrooms at midnight or that sort of thing. But if teachers have been added to a classroom, they do have access to the classroom.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee O'Brien. Trustee Guzzo, you have the floor. Trustee Guzzo?
Yep, sorry, it's taking, it's a little bit delayed. Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. And I don't know if this will be to Director Daly or Superintendent Percasim. But I think that all those things are great, and they're great to hear. However, I guess, I guess one of the things that I'd like to ask is, is what has kind of been the benchmark that has been set? The expectation that's been set for the teachers in regards to connecting? You mentioned professional judgment. This is all new to everybody. So how do you, how are you able to judge whether or not, you know, a child needs that ability to connect with their teacher? They're not able to necessarily connect directly with their classmates. I think the majority of them aren't necessarily in a live classroom situation. There are some videos that I know that are happening. We do encourage, by the way, when we are getting these parents coming to those concerns, we do send them back. However, when there are questions that are coming that are not an answer through the teachers and the principals, then it gets kicked up to us. But back to my question is, is what is the minimum ask? What is the requirements that we're having for our teachers to interact with our students other than professional judgment? Is there some sort of standard that says we expect, you know, there to be some sort of connection? And whether it be, and I don't count email because I don't think that that's a fair thing to say email because we don't have grade twos necessarily on their emails and responding to emails, or students in grade one on their emails and responding to emails. So what is kind of the benchmark that has been, or directive that has been given from the board to say, this is the expectation? And if you can do more, we encourage you to do more?
Trustee Guzzo, so I'll pass this over to Secretary Daly, and then maybe you can pass it on to whomever.
I guess I can start, and then maybe Superintendent Percasim can weigh in. Our expectation of teachers really doesn't change in some ways. Our expectation is that teachers, we hope, certainly by this point in the school year, that at the elementary level in particular, teachers know their students, teachers know their families. They would have a good sense of students that might need some additional support. We have not given a direction to teachers to say, you must personally call or FaceTime a student once or twice a week. We're asking them to connect with parents, to see how much students or parents may be accessing a particular platform. If they haven't been, to reaching out to see why that might be the case. Superintendent Percasim, or any of our family of school superintendents, if you'd like to add some context to that as well, please feel free.
Superintendent Percasim?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director Daly. I think that overall, certainly the family of school superintendents could speak to this more specifically than I could. But my thoughts are that it is a fair question, and I think that we always strive to build consistency in everything that we deliver. I believe that we're talking about elementary students, so it is quite different, a different conversation from secondary where semester two started in early February, and perhaps teachers don't have as great a time to get to know their students. Our elementary students have been with their particular teacher. And I want to be clear, there are some cases where teachers have gone on maternity leaves or off for illness reasons. But for the most part, they've been with them from September to March. So our expectation would be that the teachers very much do know their students, and that they are able to differentiate communication for those students that they feel that need to have more support as they would in the classroom with regard to any kind of accommodations or modifications to programming. And that goes for student well-being, which is extremely instrumental in everything that we do and talk about. It is foundational. Our faith formation and student achievement are something that we strive to work towards all the time. So specifically to answer in regard to what Director Daly said, we have not listed a specific number of days or time or contact, but we have made it very clear that the ministry expectation, along with the board's expectation, is that teachers do communicate with their students in some regard on a regular basis, and that when that is not the case, that the teacher, the principal, the family of school superintendent need to have the opportunity to address it so that we can rectify it and make things better for the student. Obviously, kindergarten to grade three, the communication is with the parent. Unfortunately, the direct communication opportunities with students that are young isn't possible. And we want to be respectful of family time, and we also want to understand that the total five hours of instruction and learning is something that we want to limit it to. We want to give families an opportunity to have time together and not for this to be a stressful time. So with regard to next steps, we're always looking, as I stated earlier, on improving our efforts. Certainly, when it comes to monitoring communications where we can, superintendents are supporting their principals in monitoring teacher communications and making every effort to communicate with parents and ensure that students are connecting with their teachers, and that continues to be a priority for us. So where it is not, the quicker that we get an opportunity to address it, the better it is for that student because that's really all that matters. And I do understand and wholeheartedly agree that making that human connection is extremely important during this time. But I really have to trust that our teachers do know their students. September to March is a long time, and it's a fair enough time to know who your students are and what their needs are. And I want to believe that that is exactly what our teachers want to do. And we're here to help them as a curriculum department, as are the family of school superintendents and their principals. And if we work together as a team, I think this is something that we can resolve in a very positive way. And all the great learning that's happened during this time is something not to be lost. And very much open to input and learning how we can do better because we always have an opportunity to address something that we can do together better. And I believe that as a team, we can address it. So given the opportunity, I see each situation, case by case, as being something that we can address. And I look forward to the opportunity to help whenever we can as a department.
Are there any other senior staff members that wish to weigh in on this particular question? Seeing none, then I'll move on to Vice Chair Duarte. You have the floor.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Thank you, Director Daly, for this presentation. Things are moving smoothly. We have come a long way. We basically started off firefighting, and we were inventing the Beal. Okay, so my question is basically, it's a comment which could be interpreted as a question here. As Superintendent Percasim said, we have learnt a lot of good things, and that should not be lost. We should not lose that. So have you thought, have you thought about capturing this information, the good things that we have learnt and we have struggled through and put together? How are we capturing the success we have achieved for future use? Either building up the curriculum, either building up online courses? We will get to this phase, and we will forget whatever we have learnt. So what are we doing to capture this information at the same time? Have you thought about this?
Thank you, Vice Chair Duarte. I'll pass the question over to Secretary Daly.
And I don't want to not answer the question, but maybe once we get through the rest of questions, we can talk about it in general terms about next steps because that was one of the things specifically I did want to address, Trustee Duarte. If I could do it kind of as a package, that would help me keep my thoughts straight, to be quite honest.
Thank you. So will you wait? Do you have a follow up, Vice Chair Duarte?
No, thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Agnew, you have the floor. This is the last question. We've been on this question for an hour, or sorry, on this topic. Thank you. Go ahead.
Before that, I just want to acknowledge that I believe that Trustee Guzzo didn't get a follow up. So I'm just not sure if she had one before I asked my question.
I asked her if she wanted a follow up. She was finished.
No, sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. You actually didn't. No, but that's okay. After Trustee, after Trustee Agnew, if her question isn't similar to mine, I would like the opportunity to have my follow up.
Yes, very good. I will recognize that. Thank you.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So a lot of the discussion that we've just had, and thank you again to Superintendent Percasim and Director Daly for their input with respect to how the learning is, how the instruction is being given and consistency, et cetera. I'm curious if our approach has been different from a spec ed perspective. I know that, as I mentioned before, we're seeing more hands-on support from the EAs, which has been great. But I'm wondering, from a teacher communication perspective, again, acknowledging that these are, you know, some of these students do have difficulty communicating in other ways. And I'm just curious if our approach has been different from a spec ed perspective with respect to one-to-one communications between the teacher and the students?
Thank you, Trustee. Secretary, is that for Secretary Daly?
It's probably for Superintendent Cipriano.
I didn't hear that. Oh. I didn't hear that. Oh, Superintendent Cipriano, can you please weigh in on the question?
Sure can. Through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you trustee Agnew for the question. There's a couple of things. And I do appreciate the compliments tonight for our department. We have done a lot of work, as all the departments and the board have. I, you know, the special education department has a lot of different areas and it's a smaller group of individuals. So I think in some ways, it's a little bit easier to direct the messaging and to create that consistency from just from school to school when you're dealing with a smaller group of individuals. All of our certs meet on a weekly basis with our consultants. Our department heads meet on a weekly basis, sorry, bi-weekly basis with our consultants as well. So we're ensuring that there's that consistency, but it is easier because the groups are smaller. With respect to that video conferencing and that you're seeing that a lot more of that in special education, either through our EAs, some of our certs, our speech and language pathologists, our psychologists are starting to do that. The reality is, one of the biggest challenges is equity. And so when you are providing instruction in a real-time video face-to-face conference for an entire class, I think it's been brought up a few times that the concern is that if not all students can be at that moment in time, be online, they get a different experience than their classmates. And yes, as a teacher could, video could record themselves, but some of our students don't have the ability even with wifi to be able to kind of access that. In special education, because we're dealing with one-on-one, that idea of equity is not a concern because we are only, we are only using the video conferencing, the face-to-face with one individual, with their families and with the student themselves. So it makes it a little easier. And just by its very nature, because you're dealing with smaller groups, in this case, one, it makes the ability to organize, to schedule, and to deliver that type of video face-to-face conferencing in a more consistent basis and a more often basis. And that's what we're seeing in special education. And you're absolutely right. It's happening, it's been happening already. And what we're seeing from the data is that from week to week, the number of face-to-face video conferences with our EAs is increasing. It's at more than half of our schools and that number's been increasing since the first week that we started that. So those probably the two main reasons that I would see why you're seeing a lot more of that video conferencing in special education that you might not be seeing in the regular classroom.
Great. Thank you. No follow-up.
Trustee Agnew, did you have a follow-up to that? If not, I'm moving on and giving a follow-up to trustee Guzzo.
No, I did not.
Thank you. Trustee Guzzo, your follow-up.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Superintendent Percasen made mention of the social piece with the kids. And I'm paraphrasing now because I've kind of lost what she had said exactly verbatim. But we do know that our students have a huge sense of loss and they too are going through a grieving period, for lack of a better word. You know, a grieving period of not being with their friends and being in their normal day-to-day. I guess you had asked the question, is there something, you know, you're open to suggestions, is as things are evolving and we know that we're going through another month of this platform of style of learning, is there a way to say to our teachers or give a direction that says, you know, we do something that brings them together as a class, something that allows them to interact? And I'm not saying it has to be something that has to be done daily or weekly for that matter, but something that allows them to connect again as a class, whether it be virtually, but something that we can say, hey, this is something for their well-being, for their mental health, so that they can reconnect. Because chances are, they may not reconnect again as a class this school year.
Excellent question, trustee Guzzo. I'll give that to Secretary Daly to deal with.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. And that is one of the things that we're looking at in terms of our support and monitoring of teachers on the go-forward, is that opportunity for students to collaborate both with their teachers and with their peers in some way online or through another, or through those types of activities where, you know, literally they can just kind of see each other. So that is something that we're continuing to work on.
I'll give you another supplementary. Trustee Guzzo, do you have one?
Yeah, just so continuing to work on or that's in the plan coming, moving forward? I just need clarification.
Okay, I'll just, I'll reiterate the support and monitoring piece that we're working on now that we just talked about with our principals today. So we're going to focus on engaging activities, collaboration online, continued timely descriptive feedback to students, continued communication with parents and students, and supporting teachers in ongoing professional learning. That's the plan.
Thank you Superintendent, or Director Daly. Are we ready to move on to the next question? So Director Daly wishes to wrap up this particular question, so I'll give him the floor now.
So I just wanted to touch on a couple of things in terms of next steps and then address trustee Duarte's question. So we did talk about final reports and how the year will wrap up in that sense. We are in the planning stages for summer school and we'll look for additional direction from the ministry to see if there's other things that we can offer this summer. An ongoing question we've had at the school level from parents through the school is, you know, can I get in to pick up my son or daughter's jacket that they didn't bring home or their extra pair of eyeglasses? We really haven't had the opportunity to do that because it hasn't really been safe. There's no doubt at some point in the school year, either we're going to be back in school or we're going to need to plan for that. So that's, if it turns out that we're not back by the end of the year, that's one of the things we're planning now, how to do that in a safe way. It's going to be problematic or difficult, certainly at our secondary schools or our larger elementary schools. But if you're hearing that from parents, we are trying to get those plans in place. In terms of planning for the return, we have been looking at, certainly from a Catholic director's perspective, we've all looked at some plans that other jurisdictions have put into place. New Zealand is one that our superintendents have all looked at. We'll be getting information on Manitoba and Quebec in the coming weeks because they're up next in terms of reopening schools to some degree. And certainly the ministry and the government will also be looking to our neighboring provinces in terms of how their return to school goes. Trustee Duarte's question was a very good one and it's something that I've been thinking about a lot. We've kind of been thrown into some new learning in lots of different ways throughout the organization, from how teachers instruct to how we do our work here at the board office. We've been kind of forced into thinking about it and doing it in a different way. And I think trustee Duarte makes a good point to say, if we're just going to go back to the way we always did it, that we're probably missing an opportunity here. It's a little bit tricky to kind of do that assessment as we're going through the process, but it's something that we'll certainly do as a senior team. When I have conversations with candidates, teacher candidates or leadership candidates in an interview process, one of the things I always like to hear from them is, once you've gone through an experience, what did you learn from it? Would you change something the next time around? Or did you do it in a way that made sense and you try and replicate it? So that's kind of the process we're going through now. What have we learned? What would we do differently? And I can think to a conversation I had with, a one-on-one conversation I had with a trustee, I think the second or third day of our distance learning. And one of the things that they expressed to me in their concern was, I hope that this is something you'll consider next time around. And I don't need to get into details, but I certainly, I did hear that. It's made me think about how we do professional development with teachers, what opportunities we might have to conduct that in an online forum, how we meet with principals, with trustees, with our own staff, some tools that lots of other organizations and sectors of the economy have probably been using that maybe we've been a little bit behind. Certainly around online learning and distance education because we know it's coming, I mean, we might be back to it in September. We know certainly at the secondary level, it's going to be mandated to some degree. I think our checklist will be a little bit of the best practices that our research department has developed in some of the research they've done. So things that I think we did a decent job of, ensuring access for students, assessing the readiness of our educators, these are things that we'll keep in mind as we go forward. How we can support our teachers in using digital tools. I think something we need to get our head around is trying to minimize or simplify the platforms we use. That'll be difficult to do, but that's been a concern expressed by parents and it's difficult to support our staff as well when we're on multiple platforms. How do we, how do we build communities with our students and our parents in this way? How we can define expectations for both staff, for students and parents? So those are kind of the measuring sticks that we'll be using. And as I said, we're, we certainly don't want to lose an opportunity to get better at what we do or do things in maybe a different way. So the point is well-taken, trustee Duarte. And that'll be some of our work certainly as a senior team that we'll be considering and certainly would probably hopefully inform our next go-around when we start strategic planning, when we do get to that point. It's certainly, it's really going to lead us into it for sure.
Thank you. Do you have a follow-up Vice Chair Duarte?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's, yeah, good, good planning and thinking ahead, Secretary Daly. Question here was, it's not really a follow-up, but a question, if I can ask the question. So we, we had some feedback requested from parents online and I know we had really good responses. Could you in a nutshell give us some kind of indication of what the, what kinds of feedback did we receive? Was it feedback for improvements or just my jacket and my glasses are forgotten in class? What kind of feedback did we get?
So we asked for feedback in two ways. So the first type of feedback we asked for was difficulties that parents were, or students were experiencing accessing different online platforms because we were hoping we could, we could develop some support around that. The second more open-ended question was, you know, give us some feedback or either positive, negative, or somewhere in between concerns that you have. And I would kind of group the general concerns around amount of work. And typically, and this was in that first two weeks, it was typically a feeling that students were being overwhelmed with work as opposed to the other end, although we did have a few of those comments. But for the most part, it was students and I think probably parents being overwhelmed with the amount of work. So that's information we did share back with our principals. And we did know that going in, a kind of, Online Learning 101 says the default in a new situation is typically more instead of less. It's not unlike, you know, when you're off sick and you know, supply teachers coming in, you leave lots and lots of work to make sure the kids are engaged. So that was another one. There's no doubt, we did hear from parents that they desired more real-time instruction. They were hoping for that. And there's, there's lots of reasons. I don't think it should be an either-or in terms of online or sorry, real-time or not, but that was one. Parents asking for, if not real-time, could there be more recorded video? And we certainly heard that, I mean, you've heard that from parents as well and that was expressed tonight. The number of platforms, people, different platforms in a particular school is also a frustration that parents express. All that being said, we did have a fair amount of positive feedback too. A lot of recognition that it's been a big jump for both teachers and parents. One of the things that I did try to express to our principals, I think it was last week or the week before when we met, was that we need to keep in mind, or teachers need to keep in mind, that all the struggles that our teachers have at home with their kids being at home, because their kids are home as well, and they're trying to do their work and look after their own kids, our parents are experiencing those same issues and most of them aren't teachers. So we need to keep that in mind. So that idea of distance learning being something that students can kind of do independently, there's no doubt that that's something that we've struggled with, especially with our younger grades. So that's kind of something that we're continuing to work on. So that was kind of the, probably the general, the three or four kind of bigger areas where we received feedback. And I guess just to kind of close my comments unless there's additional questions. I just do want to acknowledge the work that our teaching staff, our support staff, regardless of what their role has done to try and support our students. I'd like to thank our senior staff and senior managers for all the work that they've done as well. There's a lot of moving parts to the situation we're in and that's not, that's not a complaint or an excuse. It's really the reality of what we're trying to work with and a lot of unknowns. But we are trying to do the best that we can given the circumstances and know that in many, in many instances, we can do better and that's what we'll work towards doing.
Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. And I'd like to echo Director Daly. I live with a teacher and I'm amazed at what I'm, what I'm seeing from people who have done very little online. It's just amazing. My question to you, Director Daly, you mentioned that some platforms were mentioned over others. Is there any platform that seems to have worked better over these last four weeks and are we going to move that way?
Through you, Mr. Chair. It was a little bit, I think people found Google a little bit easier to navigate, but I think that's because it was, they'd had some experience with it. So for the most part, our teachers have used a Google platform. They were already using it in some fashion in their instructions. So students and parents were a little bit more used to it. For teachers who hadn't had a virtual learning environment platform, we really encourage them to use D2L because it is ministry and board-supported. We can do the best PD with that. So it's a bit of a new format. Again, the comments were a little bit all over the map. Some people said, boy, D2L is difficult. One of the things was, it was around consistency about where things are posted because teachers can post work in a couple of different areas. So that was one thing. As, as people got more familiar with it, they did say, hey, we kind of get it now. But I'm not sure one was preferred over the other. And we did make the decision that for teachers who had already been using a platform, that we wouldn't kind of force them off it. That's something I've thought about over the last few weeks because certainly the number of platforms has been something that families have struggled with a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien. Trustee Guzzo, last question on this segment.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Just, just a couple of things. One of it is, is can we have that information shared with us that you were making reference to, the parents' feedback? I think that would be helpful contextually in putting this in. So since we are referencing it and talking about it, if you could please share that with us. The other thing in regards to being supported, I have a question in regards to different platforms and D2L being the one supported because all of our students have Office 365 accounts, which means Office is supported by the board. And most of our students, if not majority of our students, also have Google emails. So which means that it has to be supported in some way. So how can we say that D2L is the only thing supported when we are all on Office 365?
Thanks for the question, trustee Guzzo. So it's supported from the province. It is a platform that we don't have to pay for. It's supported in a more direct way through PD. It's the one that our curriculum staff is most familiar with. It is the one that our IT staff, although our IT staff can support a number of platforms. That's why I would say it's our supported virtual learning environment platform. But you are correct in saying that we do have Office 365 and we do have, we do access Google as well.
Okay. So we now will move on to Agenda Item 4.2, 2021 Budget Estimates Update. Superintendent Loffs, can you provide your verbal report to us finally? Thank you.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Hi, everyone. The budget update, I don't really have too much new information for everybody, unfortunately. The GSNs are still what we have been told to be announced the beginning of May with the ETHIS, which is what we use to generate our revenue, to be received about two weeks or so after that, along with our EDF grants. If things change, if we hear anything additional, or get receiving additional information from the ministry, I will inform the board. But as of right now, we're still waiting to receive the GSNs from the ministry.
Are there any questions? Nope. No questions. So Superintendent Loffs, Budget Report from September 1st, 2018 to February 28th, 2020. Please provide your report to us.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I'm about to bring you the report, which is of our revenue expenses until February 29th. I should remind everybody that it seems an eternity ago, February 29th. This was really prior to the impact of COVID-19. So these numbers here that we have are prior to everything that's happened since COVID-19 pandemic. We are in line to where we expect to be. Everything is looking, lining up. We think we should be around this time of year, we're halfway through our year. We have some changes in recoverable expenses and such. Those are really things that we know, I don't usually do a year-end, we did a little more timely this year. And some temporary expenses have decreased. Well, that was a result of everyone moving back to assumption from the temporary location at Leicester Pearson. I'm open to any questions. Does anyone have any questions with the report?
Trustees, it's open for questions. Do I have any questions? Do I have any questions? No questions. Going once, going twice? So we'll move on to Agenda Item.
Mr. Chair, I thought I had hands up. Did that come through?
All right, so Trustee DeRosa, you now have the floor. It didn't come through, but you have the floor. And Trustee Murphy has the floor after that. Thank you.
It is wonderful, but it's not perfect.
So hang on, you're breaking up. So you're going to have to begin again?
I didn't start, do you hear me?
Yeah, now it's good.
You hear me now? Okay, you can.
Yes.
All right, very good. I'm going to ask a couple of simple questions then, and maybe just make a statement with respect to the presentation of the financial statements. Superintendent Loffs, we're comparing.
Trustee DeRosa, you've muted yourself again.
If we go again, sorry. Superintendent Loffs, we're looking at the numbers from September 1st to February 29th on a cumulative basis, or is that a forecast for the total year?
Through you, Mr. Chair. That's our actual numbers as of the end of February. Trustee DeRosa.
Okay, so I presume, maybe not, that there are monthly numbers from September to February 29th.
Not in this report, but not, no. These numbers here are cumulative number from September 1st through February 29th.
Okay, so we're talking about the actuals for that period of time. We're talking about the actuals for that period of time. Budget, there is no corresponding monthly numbers for the budget on a monthly basis, right?
Correct, that is correct. The budget numbers, we have the original budget, which was approved back in June, which is our original budget. And we have our revised budget, which we approved. This year we approved that in January. But there is no much adjustment.
So if I, correct me if I'm wrong here, but we have six months worth of actuals that we're comparing against a total budget to see how much the actuals, how much we've actually spent halfway through the year of the total budget, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So that's our only basis for evaluation that we have to see whether we are on track halfway through the year. Because if we had the monthly budget numbers, we could at least do a comparison either on a monthly basis or on a year-to-date basis. And I'm not, I'm just trying to clarify things here. I'm not trying to change the system or change the reporting basis. I just want to have, confirm an understanding, which I've come to, and give the benefit to the rest of the trustees to understand the same thing. So the only evaluation, the only basis for evaluation that we have effectively is to look at the actuals for six months to.
Trustee DeRosa, you've muted yourself again.
Yeah.
Here we go.
I am, I'm scheduled to look into this, this thing with IT, but unfortunately haven't been able to get to it yet. So just bear with me, okay? So I'm just here to confirm certain things for everybody's benefit so that we're all looking at the numbers the same way. So the only basis that we have for assessing where we are after six months worth of results is to compare actual results for six months to a total budget and then come to a determination as to whether we're 30%, 40%, 50%. And that's, I under, if we use that barometer, I think the conclusion is probably, is probably the fact that we're pretty well on track. Okay? My difficulty with this is that the next set of actuals that we get to compare to budget, by the time you find out actually what the total actuals are, it'll be well into, well, it would be probably by August after the audit. And we don't have the capability, and this is, at least from my perspective, we don't have the tools to be preemptive about expenses that are up, or expenses that are down, or maybe implement and find some resolution to it during the year. Now, this is not, this comment has nothing to do with the job that you guys are doing because I'm sure, you've been working with this for a long, long time and I'm sure that everybody's on top of this. But from a perspective of somebody looking in from the outside, and especially us, to try to understand the numbers and to get a level of confidence that we are on track, there might be better suggestions on how to achieve that without creating too much work. So that's my, that's what I'll say on this, okay?
So that's your observation, but that's why we have the revised budget in December. That captures everything and it brings you right up to date.
I don't want to take a debate, I just, I just want to. Okay? So I have one more question and then I will let, I will let go, okay?
So you have a supplementary, thank you.
Pardon me?
You have a supplementary question?
Call it what you will, I just have one more question. Okay? So my question is in reference to that funding formula. So I, I understand that, I'm going back to that chart for a minute, and I just want to, I want to make sure that that we're including everything that needs to be included. Now, if you will bear with me just a minute. Now, there are three general categories of funding. There's the pupil foundation grant, there's the school foundation grant, and then there's the purpose, the special purpose grant. From what I understand, the chart that we saw the other day includes those three. And through some other supplementary schedules that I've looked at. It includes those three, but there are another, I would say probably 10 different funding grants. And just to name a few, there's according to ministry, there's school facility operations and renewal allocations, there's cost adjustments and teacher qualifications and experience grant. They don't, individually, they're not a lot, but together, they're quite a bit. My question's simple. Are we considering, and when we're calculating the numbers, are we considering those grants? Or are we accessing them? Are we not accessing them? Do our numbers include those grants? Because in total, when we look at the total ministry numbers, you know, they're quite significant, in total. So I'm just wondering whether we're accessing those grants? And if we are, are they included in the numbers?
Is your question, let me understand your question, Trustee DeRosa. You're asking whether or not there are almost 30 different portfolios that money comes from for our GSN, whether or not our EFS program is accessing all of the other funding? Lieutenant Loffs, go ahead, answer the question, thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We are, everything that we are eligible for, we are accessing. We are making sure that we have populated EFS to make sure we're bringing in that revenue and it's under the legislative grants and the insurance. So those grants that Trustee DeRosa mentioned, we are accessing.
Thank you, Superintendent Loffs. Trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Superintendent Loffs or potentially Fred, if Fred is here. Another question regarding transportation. I understand that this COVID period is not captured on this document, but it brought up a question to me is, what's our obligation to the transportation consortium when they can't provide us with services? So are we obliged for the full contract for a certain percentage of the contract? I know they have office staff and what have you, they still have expenses to pay. And also, does that correlate directly with our funding? So for example, our expenses, maybe the contract won't be fulfilled because they haven't provided services, but we'll be funded to whatever amount we're obliged to pay, the consortium?
Very good question, Mr. Murphy. Yes, we are still being funded for transportation or being funded for all our grants right now. So the ministry has continued funding all our grants. And with respect to transportation, we are still funding our transportation consortium. Right now, we are, due to the fact that the consortium still has to pay its bus drivers, the ministry is still funding us. There's still expenses with the, our bus drivers and all our bus companies. We are continuing to pay as we would, with the exception is we have reduced that amount of cable slightly from where we normally pay due to the situation. But we are paying the majority to our HSTS.
You have a supplementary, Trustee Murphy?
Yes, I do. Is there a clause built into the contract? Assuming there's relating to, or something along those lines? Is there a clause built into the contract that we need to look at in the future for these catastrophic events? For reduction in services?
Pardon me? All right. So Fred, Fred will answer that question. Fred Tebo, you have the floor.
Evening, everyone. Through you, Mr. Chair. With regards to, two quick things I want to add is, yes, it's something we can certainly look at, Trustee Murphy. I do want to add though, that with regards to our funding to the consortia, we are being funded, continue to be funded by the ministry. But in addition to that, a lot of the busing companies that are consortia manages, you know, First Student, Switcher Cardi, those specific bus companies, they're also still providing services to the province with regards to providing transport for supplies, medical supplies, you know, moving people around. So they are still being utilized by the province. So that's why there's a continuation of funding on that front because there are still services being provided. More specific to the consortia itself and the staff that are within it, they're still continuing to do their work for next year. So it's, I wouldn't call it business as usual, but they still have a lot of route planning to be accomplished from now, leading up to the 2020, 2021 school year, which typically takes part during this time of the year. So there's still a lot of work being done as of now, even with the COVID pandemic taking place. And as it relates to future contract negotiations, it's certainly something that we will be reviewing. You know, this is something that a lot of times would fall under false majara, or you know, act of God. So it's something we'll be looking at in future contracts down the road, for sure.
Any other questions?
No, that was great, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. So if there are no other questions, we'll now move on to.
I had a question.
Sorry, Trustee, Trustee O'Brien, my mistake. Go ahead, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, to Superintendent Loffs. We are now in a compliant budget with a deficit of 8.7 million. Are we on our way to coming into a balanced budget at this point?
Superintendent Loffs, you have the floor, thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, we are, Trustee O'Brien, we are tracking towards a balanced budget.
Supplementary, Trustee O'Brien?
Can you elaborate exactly how are we doing that? You don't have to be too specific, just give me some generals on how are we getting rid of that 8.7 million deficit?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Actually, we brought back the revised budget, Trustee O'Brien. We actually had additional funding. A large part of that came through a couple areas. I'm going to go back and compare essentially what we had back in June to what we had in January. We got our PPF fundings in, which was a substantial amount of funds. We also had a change in the regulation relating to the staffing ratio of 22 to 1. So those were two big areas that worked in our favor by the time we got towards the revised estimates relative to where we were last June.
So we, do we still have a deficit?
We do not. We are not forecasting a deficit, Trustee.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor. Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor. All right.
Superintendent Loffs, are we intending, are we intending to use to use deferred capital contribution this year as a means of attaining a balanced budget? Will there be any transfer? Last year, there was, there was a $50 million transfer. I'm just wondering what we're expecting to transfer this year, if any at all?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I don't believe we had a $50 million transfer from deferred capital contribution. We use deferred capital contribution every year. Essentially, what deferred capital contribution does is it offsets our expense related to amortization. Not all of it, but the majority of it gets offset by deferred capital contribution. So are we using that to balance our budget? No, we are not. No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, so we'll move on to Agenda Item 4.5 Capital, no, excuse me. Agenda Item 4.4, 2020 Education Development Charges, EDCs. Superintendent Loffs, please speak to this matter.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Actually, we've had some recent developments from the time this report was originally presented to board. Senior Manager Fred Tebo is on the line as well to answer or to kind of address these, some of these changes. Fred, are you there?
Fred, you have the floor.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So as Superintendent Loffs had pointed out, when we first presented this report back in March 31st of 2020, we were informing the board in advance that we were looking to make an amendment to our 2018 Education Development Charges background, or bylaw, as amended 2019. The purpose of that bylaw amendment to increase our non-residential rates as well as implement some new, I guess, charge exemptions that were added as part of a recent amendment by the province to Ontario Reg 2098. Since then, there was an announcement from the Ministry of Education effectively saying that boards should not proceed with undertaking any new background study or the development of new EDC bylaws, given the current COVID situation that we're in right now. And albeit that an amendment doesn't necessarily fall neatly into that category of, you know, not necessarily moving forward with a new background study. To be cautious, and after discussions with our legal and professional counsel, as well as our co-terminist board, we decided to defer this until later dates once, you know, the all clear's been given and, you know, things settle down a little bit there. So once we have a little bit more of a definitive timeline as to what the next steps will be with regards to the amendment, we'll bring it forward to the board and provide a very similar report to what we provided today and discuss what the next steps will be and the timing thereof. Happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions? All right. If there are no other questions, I'll move on to Agenda Item 4.5, Capital Projects Reports. As of February 29th, 2020. Superintendent Loffs, please provide us your report.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Which you'll see in front of you is the capital update that we have as of the end of February, or end of February 2020. Some things I'd like to point out is there's still some reallocations that we need to do related to St. Scholastica and St. Nicholas, as well as under the VR, the Assumption Project. There are still some commitments that we still need to decommit. Again, this is a point in time, so there's still adjustments that are required. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions? Are there any questions? No questions? All right, so we'll move on to agenda item 4.6, construction report, Assumption Catholic High School, Secondary High School, Bishop Reading Catholic Secondary School, St. Michael's Elementary School. Superintendent Merrick, please update the board with your construction updates along with the percentage completion, if you can.
Thank you, Mrs. Chair, and through you presenting the construction reports for the new capital projects for April. As you know, construction in the province was shut down back on April 3rd. So with that, we've had limited progress since the last report, but there there is still some progress report since our, since our March checkup. So we'll start with the Assumption Edition Project. The interior is coming along now. We can see ceiling tiles and paint and the elevator going in in the new school. Once we're able to resume, we're looking at completing the final painting, finalizing the ceilings and proceeding with flooring and millwork. So we are very close on this project now. We're probably looking at four to six weeks to have it up and up and finalized. So unfortunately, we would have been very close to having completion right now on the project if we weren't stalled about four weeks ago. So we'll move on to the to the next project, which is the Bishop Reading Edition Project. So on the classroom edition, you can see the roofing is on now. The rooftop units were installed as well and the brick veneer is going up both on the courtyard and on the exterior of the facility. On the cafeteria edition, we had our open web steel joists placed just on the Wednesday before the, it would have been April 1st, before the 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 non-essential business shutdown. And then as well, the childcare center, the foundations are all installed now. We had those backfilled just before the just before the shutdown. So again, this one here, especially in the classroom addition piece, which is very critical for us to have done for September, we're probably looking at about two to two and a half months to be able to get occupancy on that portion of the building for the interior finishes and some of the exterior work as well. But presuming that we restart in the next few weeks and we are allowed to resume construction, we are still in good shape to have that completed for September. And then lastly, we have the St. Michael's Childcare Center Edition and the school edition as well. So the foundation was completed. This is one of the sites that we actually had in what you would call unsafe condition at the end of, when the shutdown was declared, where the trench foundations were in, but the the trenches were backfilled, so we were allowed to backfill those during the during the first few days of the shutdown to enable us to create a safe environment on the site before we had to shut down. So we got a couple extra days of work in at this site. But now we're at the same spot where we're shut down, like all the projects across the province. So once we're allowed to proceed again here, we're looking at doing load bearing walls and doing the underground services before we start with the the roofing on the on the new addition. So I can also state as well that we're, we're getting ready to tender the St. Peter's Childcare Center project. To let me know that was, we're approved to proceed to tender with that back in March. So we're working on that now, getting it ready to go. And then looking to see what the climate is when construction resumes and get it to tender hopefully before the summer. So we get that project rolling as well up in up in Milton. So happy to take any any trust, any questions that trustees may have on these projects or the St. Peter's project.
Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Superintendent Merrick. Superintendent Merrick, did you say the construction has not resumed at present at Assumption?
No, so all all construction across the province, unless you fall into one of the very specific categories on the essential business list, you are not permitted to continue with construction on these projects. So as of April 3rd, we had to stop construction on these projects.
So have you been given any indication of that's?
Sorry, you're cut off there, trustee O'Brien, but I think you were going to say, when can we resume construction?
Have you been given any notice of that?
No, so I mean, that's, it's in the hands of the province, so we have no indication yet. You know, we watch the the COVID data on a daily basis and it, you know, seems to be looking a little more positive. So I'm hopeful that we'll get to resume in the near future, but that's, it's really out of our hands and in the hands of the province.
And I just want to make sure you said this right. I heard you write, you said, once you do resume, assumption would take four to six weeks to finish the whole project?
Correct.
Thank you.
Sorry, and I'll say with that as well, it is a little uncertain when we come out of this. I mean, assumptions fairly far along where most of the finishing trades are fairly accessible. Some of the other projects like the cafeteria or the childcare center or Bishop Reading, it is a little bit more uncertain when we come out of this, this freeze. You're expecting materials to show up on time. You're hoping that factories that produce those materials are available on time. It is a little more uncertain as to whether those things will show up on time. But we're, you know, we're doing our best to try and line those materials up. If they're showing up now, we're receiving them and holding them. But it it is an uncertain environment now and uncertain world. So we'll have to try and roll with those punches as they as they come.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. Trustee DeRosa, you have the floor.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much. Just a comment, that must be, I'm sure it's the logistics challenge of managing what you're managing in this environment is is a tall order. I had thought that at some point in time when construction was halted, the government had issued the instructions that all sites that were in progress would be allowed to continue. Now, that might not be particularly in our environment. But do you seem to remember something along those lines where where everything that was in pro in progress was not shut down, at least for a certain period of time? No?
No, so it was, it was very specific to certain sectors. So I know if you're in residential, if you had a foundation permit, you were allowed to continue to completion. However, for for institutional buildings, it was, I believe it was healthcare, energy and justice were were allowed to continue. And we, and education was not in the allowed to continue bucket. We did get clear or guidance from the the Ministry of Ed that their opinion was that we were not a part of the the group that was allowed to continue. And there's been varying legal opinions from across or various legal opinions from across the province that have said they don't believe that we follow under that that essential bucket as well.
Thank you. Just a point of clarification.
Trustee, trustee Guzzo, I believe you have some information you would like to share with the board?
Sorry, it was just, I think, I think Superintendent Merrick got it, but it was all ICI was halted. Residential was and only healthcare was considered essential. So all of that was halted, which meant schools fell under that. So anything that was deemed ICI, which is commercial.
Correct, and the and the penalties are pretty punitive as well, so we're, we're not, we're not challenging that at all.
Thank you. Trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you to Superintendent Merrick. This question relates to the construction at BR and maybe it was sparked by by the report that Superintendent Loffs did going where we are and it looks like we're going to be over budget on that project. Is that, is that a correct assumption? And if it is, maybe you can fill us in. And then I had another question after that, if I can ask you.
So who is that question to? Who's the question director at?
It's directed to Superintendent Merrick.
Eric, go ahead.
Thank you. Through the chair. So this was back to the comment that Superintendent Loffs made about some some reallocations that have to happen on on various projects. So this is a very complicated project where at Bishop Reading, we have about little over $20 million allocated for the new addition. But we also had around $5 million that we approved for renewal on the building as well as $900,000 last year for the turf. And through the transition from our old financial system bass over to our new financial system, which is Spark Rock, a lot of those project lines have been crossed up. We need to get it sorted out and our team's working right now with finance to get it sorted out where we make sure that all the renewal items hit the renewal lines and the new capital items hit the new capital lines. So this one here, you know, I'm very confident that it it's still on track to be on budget. Whereas we just need to clean up where those, those journal entries are hitting, on which side of the funding they're hitting on right now. So I'm, I'm, I'm confident in this one. That said, our projects are always very tight and we're always on tight timelines. So it is, you know, it's always down to the wire whether we, you know, we, how tight we get to that budget. But at this point, I think we're still on track to hit the budget for this project.
Good. Can I ask a follow-up question, Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, it's not a follow-up question. It's on a different matter. Given that Milton High School number three is at the civil stage and there's very little threat, very few people on site, people in heavy equipment, is there a possibility to petition to petition the the ministry to see if we can get a special dispensation to work, knowing that we're behind on this project already? And and, you know, that could, it could have, any prolonged delay could threaten having that completed, the project completed.
Yeah, we've already made that request.
Go ahead.
We've made that request to have that, to have a discussion with the ministry about that and and make that special plea. So we're waiting on setting up that that meeting time with them. I'd say at this point, they're more worried about, you know, the health and safety of everybody and and less about getting projects completed. But we do know that we have a very good case here and we'll, we'll do our best to make that plea. With respect to the Milton number three site, we do know that we are allowed to continue with some of the work there. Some of it relates to the EDC portion of the project. So right now, if you recall that Louis Saint Laurent is under construction right now through the town, that falls into the infrastructure budget, which is part of the essential list. And part of that is getting our services out of that road and bringing them to our site property line. So that part is allowed to continue under the essential piece. However, filling our site would fall more on the institutional side, which is not on the essential list right now. So we're allowed to do a little bit of it, but not the, not the full gamut of the work we need to do at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Durt, you have the floor.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Superintendent Merrick. We have completed some work on on BR and before it got stopped. And what's the status of approvals from the town for the work that's been completed so far? Is there any pending approvals, permission to continue the work from the town?
Yeah, no, all, all of the approvals are in place for, I mean, we're obviously building it right now. So all those approvals we need through the town and the region are in place for Bishop Reading.
Sorry, I should have, let me rephrase that question. So for every step of the work that's completed, they come and do the inspection. So has everything been completed as of date? What's the status of that?
Through the chair, so all the municipal inspections, inspectors were still coming to site leading up to the last few days before the, before the, the closure or the shutdown. So they were getting more challenging as they had more staff go off. It was getting more challenging to find those inspectors, but we were finding ways around it, doing video inspections or like FaceTime inspections with those inspectors. So there was nothing outstanding that we needed to complete for inspections until that shutdown occurred.
Thanks.
Follow-up question, trustee Durt?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just wondering about the cost of the delays, if it's going to significantly impact us and how we're going to manage that, because I assuming there's costs with delays. Thank you.
Yeah, we're trying to work that out right now. Yeah, we're, we're working through that with our, with our GCs right now. Most of our GCs do a lot of school projects. They do a lot of business with us. We're on pretty good terms with them, so we're trying to be very fair about the costs. But especially around security, that is one where, you know, their crews are idle right now. They need to have, and the sites are idle, so they need to have someone, someone or something there to do those security checks on the site. That's probably the one cost where we're going to see an increase. Thankfully, a lot of our jobs are very large in scale. So the, the security costs are pretty small in terms of the the total scope of the project. So those are the ones we're seeing right now. Where we could see increased cost on the road is if we're, you know, we're looking to, you know, put a roof on a building. But the the plant that makes open web steel joists is not ready yet and we're, we're delayed because that they can't manufacture those parts. So we'll have to tackle those as they come up. It's definitely a reality that we could see increased costs or increased delay costs as we go and increased claims from from GCs. So we'll try and work through them and mitigate that. One of the challenges we have is that the the contingency funding that we have in many of our projects is very small. The funding that we get from the province has kind of, I guess it's hasn't kept up with inflation of construction practices and materials across the province. So it's, our contingencies have gotten smaller and smaller in projects as we've gone through the years here. So that will be a challenge, but we'll, we'll keep the board apprised of those. Nothing insurmountable yet, but, you know, we're, we're still early in this and there could be more to come.
Thank you. And just to follow up, so if it does go over what we initially voted for.
Bella, you, we lost you.
Are you muted?
Oh, I'm muted. Oh, sorry. I was thinking that or asking that if you do go over, then it comes back to the board for approvals. So we're, we're very aware.
Correct, and that's, that's the process we need to bring it back to the board. We do have contingencies on the project, so they are, they are small. But if we tap into those and we don't bring that to the board, obviously, because it was part of the approved budget for the project. But going beyond the total, you know, the bottom line cost of the project, that's when we have to bring it back and look for additional funds. And typically, the ministry is not, you know, cooperative in releasing those extra funds. So it's typically out of our own board coffers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any, trustee DeRosa, you have the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just very quickly, can you give me a sense of how the academic year is going to be impacted by the delay? Maybe it wasn't the message already, but I haven't heard it, so. Do you understand my question?
Who's, who were you asking the question? Were you asking Superintendent Merrick?
Yes, it's his presentation. It's his topic, right?
Thank you.
So my question, my question, I'll repeat, do we have a sense of how this delay is going to impact the academic year? If at all?
Yeah, so that's for me. So through the chair, at this point, hopefully no impact at current. We still don't know when we're allowed to resume those. That's kind of the, you know, the, the big question is when we, when can we resume? As I tried to mention as I went through the projects. So I mean, assumption we have basically four to six weeks left to work on that project. So assuming we get going by, say, early July, we should be in shape on that project. Bishop Reading, we got, you know, two to two and a half months of work left on that one. So we need to be going by, say, early to mid-June on on Bishop Reading. And then St. Michael's, that's one that we had targeted to do for, for September. It was a tight timeframe, so that's one that's likely not going to be the library portion, which is writing on that school likely won't be ready for September. However, we, there's a component of that is creating a new FDK classroom as well as a new office space. That wasn't slated to begin until, until July anyways. So as long as we get that going by July, we'll have the new office and the new FDK classroom ready to go for September. And then the library will follow thereafter, probably more looking at late October, early or late September, early October at this point. But it's, I mean, that's assuming we get going shortly and like I said, that's out of my hands. So we're waiting for a direction from the province on when we can get started on on resuming construction activities.
Trustee DeRosa, you have a follow-up?
No, thank you. I got my answer.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? If not, we'll move on to miscellaneous information. Agenda item 5.1, minutes of the February 25th, 2020 Policy Committee meeting. The minutes have been provided for your information. There is no correspondence this evening. There are no questions submitted. We do need a motion to move back into camera. So can I have a motion to move back into camera?
I'll move it.
Moved by trustee Guzzo, seconded by?
I'll second.
Trustee Agnew?
Yep.
Thank you. All in favor?
In favor.
In favor.
All in favor. Can everyone sign out? And then you'll have an invitation to come back online. Thank you.